I'll call it the order of the regular school committee meeting of the Acton School Department, September 10th, 2013. Are there any adjustments to our agenda?
Well, the one posted didn't have 10-4 and 10-5, so I think we need to add those at this adjustment. And 10-4 would be Nurses Request a Policy Committee About Status of Bloodborne Pathogen Policy, and 10.5 is Appointment of Kimberly Oliver as Accounting and Personnel Manager at an annual salary of $47,840, starting on 9/23/13.
Okay, so can we make that as a motion, Mary, to add those two?
Yes. So moved.
Somebody want to second that?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jeanette. Any further discussion? Is it a win today, probably? All those in favor? Four out. Okay, let's start with the approval of our meeting minutes from July 9th, 2013.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of July 9th, 2013, as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Mary, seconded by Jeanette, to approve the meetings of July 9th. Any further discussion? All in favor? We now want to look for a motion to approve the regular meeting of August 13th.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting, the minutes of meeting, August 13th, 2013, as written.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept the meetings, minutes of August 13th meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor? So moved. Comments from the public? Yes.
I actually have one today. I'm curious how the late bus planning is going for this quarter, whether it looks like it's going to be practical or not.
Hold on, I just got it installed.
It's coming up in Tricia's report.
Okay, thanks, I just didn't see it overtly on the schedule here, so.
And I think we were going to look at that sometime in October, weren't we?
Right.
We're going to have the students here.
As far as having some actual statistics on how many kids are riding, I think we're going to look at that in October, after the kids have had a chance to start using the bus a little bit and see how that is going. But we'll see what Tricia has to say about that in her report. Any other comments from the public?
Just one.
Yeah?
I'd just like to compliment the maintenance staff, the grounds look very nice. I think, you know, definitely we all can be proud of them.
It's Dr. Rain.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? If not, let's move on to communications and correspondence.
There are several things that are attached to the requests for policies. If you want to review those now or wait until you get to that, because those are the only communications I have to pass along to.
And those are going to come up later in the meeting. Okay, we'll skip that for now, we'll move on. Move on to the superintendent's report.
I'll be happy to read it. You have seen it, but I will read it. It's not very lengthy. Superintendent's report for 9/10/13 board meeting. For my first official day in the office on 8/13, 13 through today, 9/5 when I wrote this last week, the pace has been quick but positive. With the start of school in the third, the installation of three new teachers, the reorganization of the custodial department, and the interviews for two new central office staffers, I've been balancing many balls in the air at the same time. I applaud the board for using the 8/22 planning session so productively, and I look forward to the positive adjustments and changes being initiated for future board meetings. We are closing in on final candidates for accounting manager position and payroll accounts payable to be part-time position, and we hope to complete these key personnel acquisitions within two weeks. In the interim, I have completed the signature cards for the bank so as to be able to sign checks prior to the completion of my central office overhaul. We are appreciative of the offer by the town hall staff, Jennifer and Michelle, to help us with the warrants and the interim. And as a side, on Monday, I transferred the payroll up at Michelle's office, at the Town Treasurer, and everyone's paycheck should be fine, or their deposit should be fine on Thursday. So that worked quite well. As you will see from Principal Tricia Bolvin's report, the overall student numbers are down a little from last year, so the only classroom that is really full is the kindergarten class that contains 19 students. The vision initiative will continue as the committee meets on 9/26 to finalize the wording. With the mission and vision in place, I'll be working with the administrators on their SMART goals that will dovetail with the expected or hoped-for results that we seek for the Acton School. And aside on that, we had a productive meeting this morning in what I call the administrative council, and that was one of the things that we talked in depth about, was the SMART goal process. I am pleased that the department has met and exceeded the challenges of preparing the staff and the facility for the successful start of schools on Tuesday. It is evident that the Acton community is blessed with true professionals who are committed to offering the students the best possible education while managing the homeowner's funds judiciously. Respectfully submitted.
Anybody have any questions or comments to Ken about his report? Okay, thank you. Now let's go on to the progress monitoring report. Let's see, we've got a little bit different setup here on our agenda. Under that come the other administrative reports. Strategic plan, that probably hasn't met yet, right? What's the date for that?
Reenacting, putting the vision group back together on the 26th.
9/26.
Probably tomorrow, a little help from Tricia, who will help me with the mailing list and some of the agenda items we want to accomplish that first at the meeting.
Okay, and we'll go on to administrative reports, which you should have in your packet and be ready after their presentations to ask any questions about anything that's not covered properly. Tricia.
Okay, well, I'll address Paul's concern. I have emailed both Jed Petsing, the Sanford High School principal, and Jean Monroe, who manages the first student for us. I'd like to start the late school, the late bus run next Monday afternoon. I've asked Jed to work with me and Jean to work with me on coordinating the same pickup process at the high school for the Acton students, as well as communicating out to the students that that bus is ready and available. The drop-off will be here, again, approximately 4:20, 4:30 in the afternoon. We'll have it run five days a week, collect data on the frequency and numbers. So for instance, there may be two on Monday, but maybe there's 10 on Tuesday. So we want to know, not just how many overall, but date-specific as to what are they using it for? You know, is it three of the same kids over and over again? Can we plan? You know, certain days, like a Friday maybe is never used, but you always need it on a Monday and a Wednesday, so that we can have that data by the end of October and have it reported out. So I will be having announcements made, once I get confirmation from Jean and Jed, so that students know. The goal is to announce it on the morning bus runs, as well as at the school. So even those that are running on the morning run, but were being picked up by parents in the afternoon, we get that message that it should start on Monday.
Good. That's a good start.
One of the paragraphs in my new website memo that I'm going to update probably once a month, I call the view, my view from my window, or the view from my window. And one of the items that is on there, on paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4, is the, on the transportation front, we are pleased that the Board of Education has authorized the late bus. So that further lets people know that we're right in the middle of finishing that. It's on the website as we speak today. My comments.
Is it known what time any of that's going to be at this point, or?
Well, it'll be a 4 o'clock pickup at the high school.
At the, okay, so that's not arrival here, that's at the high school.
Right, so you allow the 20, 30 minutes, depending on how long it takes them to load, et cetera.
No, that's at the high school, 4:20 to 4:30.
Yeah, 4:30.
No, here.
Probably 4:30.
Pickup at 4 o'clock at the high school.
4 o'clock at the high school, got it. Thank you.
And then whatever it takes to get here.
Right.
Probably.
With construction, it could. Okay, I highlighted the teacher workshop today, the back-to-school things, as usual, in my report. The Target red card, I'm hoping somewhere in the packet was a copy. There's a red card, credit card that Target uses, and it's a volunteer thing for any community member to assign, Acton as its recipient. We got $43 and some odd change. This type of money, Hanaford money that we get, things like that, I put towards the Student Assistant Fund. So when I get a student in need, let's say in February, all of a sudden, they can't afford something, it was not planned, short on snacks, I can use that Student Assistance Fund for those emergency situations for kids, so that might not otherwise participate in a field trip or, you know, afford a snack or something like that. So it's a very small fund, but that's how we use that money. There's some information there further on the standards base from Kristin Galoppo, who is one of my lead teachers in making changes in her instruction. Really excited about the number of teachers embracing learning how to teach differently to assist kids. Really encourage the school board members to come into the school, come into the classrooms when you can. I know that you're looking to also have students come here and show you what they've learned and done. I've mentioned that to Kristin, that, you know, to look towards the future meetings, to see when students, maybe even walk through the gym and show how they go about their lesson, that is really changing their physical education program. You know, the skills are being measured by the students, they're understanding what they're doing. Really exciting. Sports coach, Sanford's loss is our gain, that they cut programs, and we gained a coach because of it. And he's coaching both boys and girls soccer. Coffee and Conversation, please note, I have had to move it to Monday instead of Tuesday mornings due to the volume of meetings on a Tuesday. So that'll be here Monday mornings. And again, I encourage community members and volunteers to come, have some coffee, chat, meet other people that care about our school. Backpack program, again, is getting up and running. It is our Jeans Day money that primarily funds this. $2 every Friday for teachers to wear, staff members to wear jeans contributes to the backpack program. This allows some of our neediest, underfed children to go home with a backpack of food that even the child can manage, things like pre-made, mixed food, peanut butter, things that even a child could feed themselves. And that was very successful last year, hoping to get some more sponsors for it beyond the teachers program. We talked about that a little last year. On the back is a list of some of the foods that could be donated, should somebody feel they have excess stock at home or hitting a BJ's Run. And then the upcoming events. Next week is our open house. The PTG is once again putting on their spaghetti supper before the open house. We will continue to have our assemblies on Friday afternoons, and a few other things there with PTG and the flu clinic. This place is quickly filling in with events and activities. Building use forms are going quickly. It's a popular place.
What time is the open house?
The spaghetti supper, I believe, starts around 5:00. Open house is from 6:00 to 7:00. We will gather in the gymnasium at 6:00 o'clock, so if the school board wants to come and be, you know, included into the introductions, that would be the thing to do, is come down to the gym at 6:00.
Is the new coach, is it Paul Lavassa or Pete Lavassa?
I was told by Tracy, Paul.
I think it's Paul.
Coach Paul, he was the freshman coach, maybe?
Yeah.
Pete Lavassa, Pete Lavassa is a gym teacher in the school, well, at school, that's why I wondered if it might have been.
Oh.
Did he get away with freshman soccer, et cetera?
There's been a lot of cuts in the programs at the middle school and high school because of budgets.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions?
This backpack program, the sponsors and the community, would, I mean, can any, what do you bring in? Is there a list of, or is it just?
Either or.
I have my package.
So there's a list of food, or we'll take monetary donations as well.
Yeah, okay.
And we're going to try to make some contact with the Lions Club, right?
Right.
Correct.
We are going to try to reach beyond.
Is it working pretty good, that program?
Get some sponsorship.
The few, we had six continuous, and the kids had an extra backpack, just looked like an ordinary backpack. Got it Friday afternoon, came back empty Monday morning. Very, you know, very subdued kind of behavior, there's no highlighting of it. But again, we've got a core group of PTG members. They'll come in and they're the ones who do the packing. They, you know, they keep the shelves, we've got some extra cabinetry that we put in the life skills room to store the goods, and I just tell you, just incredible sense of community support. I just know that we've got more kids that could benefit from it as well.
Yeah, we have, we do it for Sanford in our office, and they have a box in the lobby, and it's filled every week. They have someone organize it for the town, for the school. And they have them in all the different businesses, and they go around once a week, collect the boxes, but every week it's filled, you know. Very effective, you know? That's great, that's great.
Trouble is, we don't have very many business places.
I was going to say, oh my god.
Yeah, but even, I think even people would, if you knew more about it, would donate and give, you know.
Maybe put a box in the town hall, or the library, or something like that. Those places are frequented pretty much now.
And is that on the website? And is Coffee and Conversation with a New Date on the website?
The Coffee and Conversation is not updated on the website, so that would be a great thing to do.
That should be a good link to just press and be able to know when it is, where it is.
Good point, thank you.
And I know that this Target red card fund has improved this year because we had a baby in our family.
Yeah. All those shoppers.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else got anything, Patricia? Okay, how about Joy, Special Ed?
Hey, well, as you can see in my report, our Special Ed staff works very closely with the regular Ed staff and attends all their active participants in the common planning meeting. So first of all, I'd like to thank all of the contracted service people who started last week, actually earlier than usual pulling through. Some came for an extended time to help acclimate a few students that we have coming in that we wanted to include, and it has gone exceptionally well. I'm really pleased. We have such a high caliber of professionalism among our contracted people, and our educational technicians are just, they're superior in any other place I've been, and of course, our staff. But I just want to thank them for a great start to the school year. And as you can see, I've included a student enrollment. We have a total of 16 students, that includes the high school students, and I have it broken down by grade, as you can see. We have three special educators, case manage our students, and a speech and language therapist or pathologist, she's actually a pathologist with all of her Cs, you know, all of those certifications. 80% occupational therapist, 40%, so she's here two and a half days, and, or not quite. And our physical therapist is here for a day and, a day and a couple of hours. And our school psychologist is as well, a day and a couple of hours. A day and a morning. It depends on the week, it fluctuates, depending on what we have. And again, they support our students very well, and especially in our endeavor to fully include kids, we need to have the support in the classrooms, and they do an exceptional job. And I'm just happy to be here and starting a new school year, and happy to have.
And you have a comment you're probably going to make about a new piece of playground equipment.
Oh, yes.
Well, we have a new piece of playground equipment, thanks to Mr. Brazier, for student use, who, out of the goodness of his heart, made this or constructed this for our students on the playground.
It was designed by the physical therapist, and I enjoy doing things like that, and.
And it shows.
Glad to do it.
What is it?
What is it?
Climbing thing?
It's actually an area, a play area for a student who has some special needs and requires to be contained a little bit, I don't want to say restricted, because of the nature of that student, and it's hard for me to detail because it's confidential, and.
But it's a very adaptive.
Very adaptive piece of equipment that we are very grateful for.
That's great, Andy.
And he did that, Mr. Brazier.
Thank you for that.
Once again, came through. And that's really my report.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? For Joy? Sounds good, and I see your IEPs are going to be working towards lining up with a Common Core, too.
That's right.
I was glad to see that in your report.
And our Special Ed case managers and some of our other staff will be going to training around how to do that most effectively.
Thank you. Technology.
All right, my report's pretty short. I've been busy trying to get as many devices to the children as possible. So I deployed over 100 devices, 50 new laptops in the 7th and 8th grade, and then their old devices were trickled down to the other classrooms and the library. So yeah, we're looking at over, I don't know, 100 something laptops I've been distributing throughout the classrooms. A lot of one-to-one, so kids will have their own personal device. I tried deploying a new firewall solution that is to protect us from inappropriate content online, as well as intruders trying to get in. But the company that deploys and maintains this was unable to integrate it the way we intended. So the next time I have a free moment to take down the network, I'll try that again. I'm probably looking somewhere around Thanksgiving. And if it fails, have agreement with the company that they'll credit us the money that we've already paid for, and void the contract. And then we'll continue using our current solution, which is fine, it's just not as.
Pushed.
Yeah, and it's not as robust and powerful as the paid solution. On top of that, I've been doing a lot of things that I don't have in my report, dealing with curriculum. I've been assisting with technology curriculum and overall curriculum across the school. So we're trying to gather that data and try to build something with that. And there's probably a bazillion other things with that in my report.
My question for you is with the new library media specialist, have you been, like, having to work side-by-side with this person? Is that what you mean by technology curriculum?
Yes, we're working together, along with Gail, because she's done a lot of the lesson plans, or assisting the lesson plans in the computer lab. So we've been working together as a group the past couple of days to develop a curriculum that we can then go to the teachers and gather the information that we need from them to build upon lessons to help support them. So our first goal is to hit the upper grades, 8 through 6. I'm hoping to meet with them tomorrow, if a firewall drill doesn't get in the way.
Is that the unannounced one?
That's the unannounced one.
First ones are always announced.
So we're going to try to get 6 through 8 in place and implemented as far as technology curriculum and lesson plans go, and work our way.
So the goal is to really identify what skills we feel they should be leaving 8th grade with, and what gaps do we already, do we have, and what are our most efficient means of closing those gaps before they leave us. But also, you've got the, really, three components of these research-location curriculum pieces. You've got the skill of using the technology. You've got the responsibility, the citizenship, of using the technology. And then you've got the content that's in the classroom subjects that needs to fit in, so the lessons have a connection in a meeting. So it's really a coordination effort. The three of them have been just fabulously working together. Produced a chart for teachers to fill in and give feedback on, because again, there hasn't been somebody overseeing all these pieces all the time. We have some teachers who have honed in on certain skills that they like because of the project that goes with it. So students may have excessive amount of practice with word processing, but very little practice with an Excel or with digital cameras, and all of these things come into play. So the goal is, after the coordination of efforts, Mike can back off of the teaching end, Gail can be supportive, as she's been in the past, and Sharon will oversee and coordinate.
Well, you see, I'd like a presentation by her in one of our presentations. What is it called now? Now I saw a different name. Instead of student presentation, I see celebration of learning presentation. So that would definitely be something I'd want her to come in and show us what she's learned, you know, in the months to come.
Yep, yep. There'll have to be some, you know, we're doing the investigative time. There'll be requests for piloting from the school board, and then eventually a request for curriculum adoption.
Because we're looking at a full-blown, school-wide curriculum development on top of this.
Well, it sounds exciting.
Yeah, sounds like you're off to a pretty start, too.
Were you able to sell any more of the laptops? I mean, you sold a few of them.
We sold all but four or five, I think. So, yeah, I think we may have made a couple thousand bucks. That will help pay for the laptops we had to accrue or pick up to update our systems.
The percentage in the paper last week of schools that went with the Mac, yeah, with the iPads.
Yeah, it was a 60, 30, 10.
Pretty up, yeah, pretty high.
Did it say percentage of happiness, too?
No, well, your children's didn't even play with the state's recommendations.
Right, well, but I hear the Sanford High School students, and then I hear the Noble High School students, and then I say, well, in my school, we made a better decision.
No, yeah, 60% went with the iPad solution, which is highly limited, but is quite transportable and, you know, mobile, and cheap and expensive. The HP solution was minimal, not many schools went with that solution. And 30% of the schools went with the MacBook Air solution, which is what we went with, which has a little more cost to it, but is more versatile, more adaptive. You don't have to convert everything you've taught over the past one year. You can keep going, and when we're ready to, we can move on to a tablet solution or, you know, something more mobile.
Any other questions for Mike? No comments? Let's move on to facilities.
I'm just going to hit a few of these, because I do have a request coming up under the long-term planning. As you can see, the library chairs have arrived, as well as the new CAF tables. The other thing that Mike and I did this month was we took a little trip around the building with Pete DeRoccius, who originally installed our surveillance system, our camera system, to explore the possibilities of future expansion. Probably next month, either Mike or myself will have some information to bring back to the board as far as the possibilities of expanding the system. The other thing mentioned on the report is, I mentioned that I'll be purchasing a new floor machine. Met with a gentleman from Cleanorammer out of Westbrook today. He brought down a machine, which I had Jim Woods, who's our day custodian, demo with him, and Jim and I were both pleased with the performance of the machine. So that has been ordered, and I expect it in, probably in about three weeks. The annual preventative maintenance on our heating system is complete. And then the last thing on my report is the posting of our opening for night custodian. We'll be moving forward with hiring later this month. And that is all for this evening.
I'd like to add to his report that he made a good acquisition of a sub, Mrs. Place, that's working here in the evening. She's very productive, very pleasant, and a good addition to the team on a temporary basis.
Yes, very pleased.
I'm sure to call her again if we have some sickness or something.
Yep, very pleased with her stepping in. Yep, very pleased with her stepping in, and I'd also like to thank both Jim and Josh for their hard work over the summer months. And, you know, the last week before the staff and students gear up for school is very busy. And then once school begins, it's that transition where we're always busy. So they both have worked very hard and, you know, should be recognized for their efforts. So very pleased with how well they're doing and how much pride they take in their work.
Well, I'd like to mention, which he skipped over, the laptop towers, which I saw, and they're very nice and sturdy compared to what was there for many years. So I want to thank you for making those. They look great.
Thank you.
Teachers must have been happy with those, huh?
They're all in here. Little laptop towers.
Because, you know, they have to place their laptops at the charging station, and it's wooden. It's a big tower.
He built them?
Yeah.
From scratch. Beautiful. Stained.
Beautiful.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else for Andy?
No, I just wanted to mention, though, why we were thinking about expanding the camera system on that first day of school. We did a tour of the grounds, and I was surprised to learn that we didn't have any camera right out back on the playground side, which is where I thought one of the first ones was going.
I thought one was going there, too.
Right, so there's not one there, and...
Access.
No, I know we only had so many cameras and where to put them.
And getting a camera there is more...
Oh, and getting it there?
Yeah. How you're...
It's not going to be attached to buildings.
Well, there are remote cameras. No, I don't know anything about it. So when Pete DeRoccius comes, it'll be interesting. But that's definitely where I wanted one because, you know, trying to look at the field and making sure, you know, the ones who are trying to destroy the grounds, you know, we can find and punish.
Yeah, when the original camera system went in place, we looked at cost and effectiveness on the cameras themselves, and putting cameras back there and being able to connect them to the system wasn't going to work because of all of the foliage that was in the way because you'd have to connect it to the building and then be shooting across trees, and you wouldn't see anything anywhere. But in order to effectively get cameras out there, you have to put them out there, which means we have to dig a trench, run cabling, and...
Well, we'll see.
Power source.
Yeah, so that's more expensive.
But, you know, we have wires going to that concession stand.
Yeah, that kind of goes in a different direction.
And digging is the scary part, too. We have to dig.
We'll see.
Is there a lot of problem in the fields?
You do, but they don't get them all either.
Well, maybe with digging, you know.
We discussed all that on a walkthrough for our new deployment possibilities, so...
Let me just see.
When we get the numbers, we'll see how affordable it is.
Because they will grow. And they will get taller, and then the leaves will be way up here, and here's the camera, you know. All right, thank you.
Okay, let's move on now. Student data. I know we have numbers from... Joy, do you have numbers in Tricia's report?
I did not have student data. I can tell you that we are almost identically at the same place as we were last year. We're 200 and 205 students, but they're just not in the same location. We have smaller numbers at the middle school and larger numbers at the lower end. So again, we're predicting and planning for the right teacher numbers and the right student. It is unbelievable. Except we're up to 19 kindergarten students. We have 22 sixth graders, so we've got these highs and these lows. We didn't have to hire anybody.
Can you tell?
You just can't. You really can't. As well as you think you're planning, you know, we had 13 kindergarteners listed in May.
Well, you know, when we made up this new agenda at our August 22nd meeting or whatever, we were talking about not just student numbers, but we would like, and I'm just talking for Kevin here, he wants, unless that's in upcoming data. What is that?
Well, I think we don't expect a lot of data tonight.
No, no.
In upcoming data, when the testing is going to be done and those kinds of things, that's...
So the student data is, yeah, how are we doing on the kneecaps or all those testing, the knee...
NWA's are done in the spring. Kneecaps testing starts September 30th. Just got the box in today, as a matter of fact. So that'll be through this three weeks of a window of opportunity, first three weeks of October, basically, for the kneecap testing.
Right.
And then the MEA still is in charge of the science for grades five and eight, and that's done in the spring. And then the online, computerized NWA testing is...
In the spring.
In the spring, April, May.
Right, but even there's the reading or, I know it's some type of, every child is tested at the reading level.
DRAs.
DRAs. So those types, I know he wants all that type of data, one per meeting at least, right? That's basically, he wants to see the data. Or, and, not just the data, but then compared to last year type of data, are we doing better with the child? Not yet, you know, identify the child, but, you know, overall, the children are doing better, you know. He wants to see data. I'm just talking for him. He wants that.
We have, with our tools this year, IXL Language Arts. We will have, no, we have IXL Math right now. We will have IXL Language Arts, which, once teachers start utilizing the system, it will collect the data for us.
That's what I mean, and just bring it to us.
Yeah, so this is one more tool we can use to analyze language arts and math data as long as the teachers are utilizing it efficiently in their technology lessons. And it goes K through A to software, so we can use it across the board.
And I have done the longitudinal reporting out in the past on the MEAs. I can do that again.
That's exactly, yeah.
Not a problem.
That's what he was requesting, and then I guess somehow tie it into...
Tie it into our strategic plan and how we're coming on, working towards that and what we can actually show from data, shows that we're making progress.
You know...
Right, when we report out for the federal government, for the AYP, our state scores, our scores at the reading level have always been 5 to 10% ahead of the state, which really, especially with the higher our grade, the higher the gap, the improvement. The math have been at or just above state percentages. So that growth has not been as significant as the English Language Arts. So we've been tracking that all along. So that's just something we can continue to do, and we could break it down as you request.
Kevin's a data man.
I know, and you know what? And I was never before...
Data mining.
But it really does help you see trends. You know, it's not good to do a one-day snapshot and think you've got the whole picture, but it's the trends, and I say that to teachers. You know, if it's just one kid in your class and everybody else got it, okay, well, then the child needs an adjustment. But if more than 20% of the students didn't get it, it's the teacher that needs the adjusting. And we, as a school, are looking at that. The teachers have been doing a fabulous job researching and going back for new instruction on math to close that gap. What I find also interesting, when you look at the data, is a tremendous percentage of the state uses the same math program. So if the entire state is that far behind themselves, if you will, compared to the English, you know, the literacy piece, that tells you there's a default in the program as well.
Is that everyday math?
It might be.
Oh.
So again, teachers are researching, piloting, and this is really a huge piece for education. I am encouraging our teachers, as, you know, other school districts are as well, try it.
Look elsewhere.
You've got to try something to see how it works, and if it doesn't work, you need to stop and reflect and try again. There is never, ever, in the years that I've been in education, I've never seen a program that one-size-fits-all, no matter what the subject you're talking about. So it's really about feeling safe, going to a workshop, coming back with new lessons, trying it in your classroom, discussing it with your colleagues. A lot of the common planning time, especially at the primary wing, is talking about those new, the Singapore math and things that they're trying. The teachers are meeting during the summer and after school on their own because they want to get that much better at their craft. So, you know, it will be important to have this data because as we do try new things, we have to measure whether we've hit those new targets.
Good.
That's fine. I'd just like to mention that I've been doing a lot of research on other schools' websites, and I've been discouraged to see that sometimes the superintendent will leave something too stale. He'll have a note or she'll have a note, and it is very dated and shouldn't be there much longer. And so I just took mine off that I had written a couple of weeks ago because it talked about, we still had a few weeks in the summer, and now it's, now that school started. So I'm going to write something that I can change a little bit from time to time every couple of weeks so that I can be our cheerleader for the various events that are happening, but also delete, like the last sentence in my one that's up on the website today says, "I also look forward to seeing you all at the 917 open, school open house and the PTG spaghetti supper." So that line can come off and I can put something else on it. I just want to make it fresh because I know we get all involved in everything, but for our website watchers, whatever, our parents who are looking at these things, I think they deserve to see fresh news, not something I discussed a year ago or six months ago. I'm just passing that out to you.
You know, the spaghetti supper, maybe you should put the time or something or other because it just talks about...
At my time of printing, the PTG didn't have that information to me.
Oh, they didn't know. Okay, but I'm just saying...
It will come out.
You know.
And it'll be on the board.
It'll be on the sign, too.
It'll be on the sign. Notices are going home. They just didn't have that information to me.
I know, I just...
Anything else on the data subject? All right, then, let's move on to committee reports. Long-term planning committee met tonight, did you?
Would you like to report out?
Go ahead, since you have to ask us for some.
We did meet tonight. We discussed several potential projects, and one of the items that we have discussed in the past and is pretty much next on our list is seal coating the parking lot. And what I would like from the board tonight is to get approval from the board to put this out to bid. I have a rough idea of what it will cost, but I'd like to put it out to bid to see what we get for prices and then come back to the board, hopefully next month, with a recommendation.
Well, one of my things was, can we motion to spend up to, say, $15,000? He had a, I guess, in 2007, it cost us $9,400 or something like that?
2007 was last time you said.
The last time it was done was in '07. I got a price from Joe Violette, who did the parking lot in 2007. I spoke with him last summer back in June, and he gave me a price, which basically, he goes through, trims all the edges, checks for cracks, rubberizes the cracks, and then seals it. It's like a turnkey package, and that price was $9,343.
Did he do the front and the back in 2007?
In 2007, no. 2007, he did not do what is now known as the bus loop. So this price of $9,300 includes the bus loop.
So I'm just saying, so he doesn't have to come back and they can still do it before winter?
I'm hoping...
We would like it done before winter because then it's nice and black, and then, you know, it's easier to clean off with the winter snow and ice. So if we could get this done, I don't want to wait till October to approve a bid. I want to say if he's approved up to, say, $15,000 to do the job. And, you know what I'm saying? Does that make sense?
Is that the other side of the building, too? With the parking lot?
That's the whole thing.
She's going to pay me $10,000?
Yes.
Do you fill in the cracks, Mary? Is that right? They fill in the cracks?
Yeah, they fill in the cracks, and then they put that black stuff on it. And then they, I guess, is that re-stripping the spaces?
That doesn't include the re-stripping.
So routine would give you enough to re-stripe for paint.
So you're making that as a motion, Mary?
I'd like to motion that we go out to bid and, but give Andy the ability to spend up to $15,000 from the capital improvement fund to seal coat the parking lot.
Can I hear a second?
One second. How many people are around it still do that? I saw very few vehicles around it seal coat. Usually, there's a lot more around.
We might own, we put it out to bid.
Yeah, I guess so, yeah. I don't see as many around as there has been.
Jeanette did a second?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor? So moved.
Thank you very much.
And also with the long-term planning, we're going to have a sheet next meeting, the next school committee meeting to give you that shows what we've done in the last five years, you know, and what we're doing, and then what we plan to do. So you can get an idea of, you know, how we're trying to tick off that list.
Yes, because the other thing that we discussed tonight was repairing the concrete sidewalks with it deteriorating. And then the other thing that we discussed was pricing on window and door replacement in the 1957 and the 1978 wing. Those windows are, you know, they've got some age on them.
And that we know is a big project.
Looking at it from an energy efficiency point.
Yeah, that was brought up when we did our walkthrough, too, wasn't it? Okay, thank you. How about the policy committee?
We haven't met yet.
Haven't met yet?
No.
Not met, but you have some policies to bring us...
We've got some policies that are coming forth in here anyway that we'll be taking up on 10/4. Okay, how about negotiations committee?
Negotiations committee? We're still meeting.
Still meeting, huh? Okay.
Getting there. I'll say that.
It's still on for tomorrow.
Yeah. There is a meeting set up for tomorrow. That's all I'll say.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any unfinished business? Any leftovers from last month?
Hopefully not.
Hopefully not. Okay, let's go on to new business, then. We have a request from Tracy Spelly, athletic director, to make concussion management procedures into an African school policy.
She is on her way here. Should there be any questions? Hopefully, she'll be here soon.
No, I mean, did she follow what they are doing in Sanford, which they've been doing for like two years?
Yeah, she went to a meeting with, I think, not just Sanford, but I think others as well, and then she goes to athletic director meetings as well. And again, one of the challenges we face is we don't have an athletic trainer on duty. We don't have certain personnel. So while there's some guidelines for head injury precautions, we don't have that kind of staff support to follow through on things. I know even just one of my sons last year appeared to faint or whatever, and, you know, the athletic trainer, right there, into the athletic wing and did all the things she needs to do, but she has that training and she, you know, she's always on hand. So we just want to make sure that we have a procedure and policy in place that we can also enforce. You know, we don't want to be caught in a liability situation, and we want to make sure all our athletes are safe. Tracy tries to be at all the home games as the athletic director, but that's really, at this point, that's all we have for that backup. So there's a concern there.
Can you move on to her for a few seconds? Because she might be here in about five minutes, I think.
She's...
Yeah, we can wait. So what, really what you're looking for is to make this into, to develop a policy that includes all this material that's here for these procedures. Okay.
Because this is the procedure, and she probably wants it signed off right now with soccer. Soccer actually is worse than football with concussions, believe it or not, so...
I can understand that.
Well, we can certainly adopt the procedures tonight so that these sheets can be signed by parents and then develop a policy from this document. Okay. Back to my identity here. Okay, we need delegates for the school boards.
I'm definitely going.
Well, you know, I'm kind of confused about this one date. Don't they usually have it for two days and the second day?
No, this is the delegate assembly that they hold that one day, and then... No, this is the delegate assembly that they hold that one day, and then the meeting is two days.
Well, what would it be on Friday then, the next day?
The delegate assembly would be held on Thursday, October 24.
Right. It's on the 24th.
But usually, they print the whole agenda, you know? They say what's there on one day.
That'll be coming with workshops and things like that, you mean?
Yeah.
And then what do they have? The last day, they have a vote with all the delegates? Is that what they...
No, in that meeting, they vote on all the proposals that came forward.
Okay, so we'll...
But this is just for the delegate. This isn't really saying who's going from here.
Right.
But if you would like to appoint me delegate, I plan, I would like to go to that meeting. I have things to say.
Somebody want to...
All right, I'll nominate Mary.
Thank you.
We like that.
The main school board, association, delegate assembly.
I'll second that.
I'd like to go the second day, you know, the day that you get to go to all the sponsored things there. I am off that day, so you're going the second day?
All those in favor of Mary as a delegate?
You're going to be going both days? Okay, I don't know.
Okay, so the last, last then, somebody want to nominate Jeanette as an alternate?
Yeah. You'll go with me both days, yeah?
Well, I can go both days, yeah.
All right. I'll nominate Jeanette to be alternate.
I'll second that.
Okay, then moved and seconded it. Jeanette be nominated as an alternate? Any discussion? All those in favor?
And if Kevin's around, he loves going to these things, he'll probably go too.
Be around, well, he'll go to some of the workshops and stuff.
Yeah, those are very interesting.
Those are the things that are fun to go to. Now, we've got our new agenda. I think what we, all we really have to do is decide, this is an update, this isn't a new, we're not making a new policy, we're just updating our old policy with a new agenda.
Procedure.
With a new agenda. I think that's what we need to do, and then when the policy committee meets, they can just, all we've really got to do is just date, put on, put the new one in there and the date that it was amended. Does anybody, I think this is what we hammered out at our workshop that we wanted to try to do with the, and the reason that classroom presentations got changed to celebration of women presentations is because, as I was thinking about it, we might want presentations just from staff members sometimes.
Well, that's, you know, like the techno, you know, the new lady there.
Yeah, and not just, not just from the kids.
Library media specialist.
And...
Perfect. I love it.
What we need to do now is to get some information out to the staff that says that we're going to be looking. We want to see some of these things that are happening in the classrooms and have them sign up for a certain month. We dedicated like 15 minutes out of the meeting time at our workshop for this particular section, so is this something that I will put together? You want me to put a memo to the staff out, or...
Well, would you like to give me an overview from you folks, and I'll issue the request to them?
That sounds good.
In other words, I'll go from your directive to me on how it's now fitting in the new agenda, and I will seek their participation.
That sounds great. Okay.
Because people weren't there at our workshop, I just want to make an announcement that the reason why we want the administrators to give their reports and just highlight some of the things, because we are going to read your reports, we're all very diligent like that, and so we're going to, you know, and to sit through that meeting and listen to it again, yes, it's great for the camera and people in the public, but maybe they should come here and we could give them a report. But the other thing is, we really want to put time in for the children and children, you know, student data and just stuff like that. We need to know more about the kids and what's going on, so...
And hopefully, if there are students participating, then there'll be more people in the public arena.
Right, you get the students here, you'll get some parents here, hopefully. But like, Pat Reeves used to do Legos. Is anyone taking that on?
Our new teacher of the gifted and talented is taking on the Legos, Odyssey. She has already started trying to write grants to bring in special...
Funds?
Things, funds, as well as learning, you know, very experiential learning type of teacher. She's full steam, had just a wonderful find.
Right, so what we're trying to do with the calendar, I know Legos, they have the big presentation in December, so after that, you know, in the December meeting, it'd be nice to see their Lego presentation, you know? You know, that's the type of thing we want to do.
I do think that's important, and I think, again, as we're looking at changing the way teachers are doing instruction, if a student comes here and can share with you a project or a learning event and explain to you what their target was and how they went about learning and what they accomplished, that is a wonderful reflection on the teacher as well.
Yeah.
It's a win-win. But I do think that it is wonderful for the community to hear from the students themselves as much as possible.
Right.
You know, and I think it does, parents and grandparents and neighbors, you know, they're going to watch, knowing that the child that lives next door is going to be on TV. So, I do, I think that's good PR.
Yeah.
And there was a time too, in our meetings, when certain, maybe this was something that was done, I don't know if this was done through the, through the association, teacher association, but there was like a teacher representative that was at all of our meetings at one time. There was a teacher there that would...
At least one teacher, not two.
At least one teacher that would take, you know, notes or whatever and...
Bring it back to the association.
To the staff and let them know.
But that's something we can direct you to do too, is to send out that.
Reach out to them.
Yeah.
They do have a teacher rep on the PTG.
Yeah.
Is the liaison, you know, not that other teachers don't go, but it's that type of thing.
But it wasn't always the same person.
Right.
It was a different person. You know, sometimes it would be the same one that might come back to them.
But there was definitely at least one teacher.
Who were always...
Watching us.
Always a teacher there. Big brother looking over the board.
No, but it's nice to have their input when we have questions.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Okay, so could we have a motion to amend our present policy?
Agenda.
Agenda.
I'll make that motion.
To the current one?
To the one we used tonight.
To the one we used tonight.
Tonight, yeah.
Motion by Mary.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Jeanette. Any further discussion? All those in favor? So moved. Okay, we're going to go back to 10-1 now that Tracy's here.
It's been waiting for me. I'm waiting.
Yeah.
Okay. I have here, I have five copies here of the Acton School concussion management procedure.
We've got it.
Here we go. Oh, you already have them. Somebody edited for me.
Okay.
We all have it. I made sure. All right.
They had an electronic?
By the school year 2013-14, there's supposed to be a policy in place at every school for concussion management. And at the start of the school year, I did a lot of work this summer with Carol Wendell. Also, last spring, Carol Wendell went to quite a few meetings with other area nurses, and I met with other schools to try to find out what would be the best for Acton School because we don't have a trainer, and we also don't have the computer program to put the kids through the pre-test before they start their sport. So, Carol and I sat down, and this was borrowed from Sanford, tweaked a little bit to fit our needs, and Carol Wendell and I did that together. We feel like we came up with the best thing that we could at this point, and now it needs to actually be adopted as a policy. So, I don't know what that procedure is, but I wanted to make sure that you saw this and know that it's similar to what Sanford uses, except I had to take out, obviously, the part about the training and the computer, the computer part. But it informs the parents, you know, about precautions. My soccer coach that I have this year, he is first aid certified, CPR certified. Not every coach is always certified, so fortunately, we have a wonderful coach this year who can tell if somebody has a concussion. Basically, it's going to be up to the coach, and if the player comes in the next day and is directed to Carol Wendell, she will make the decision, you know, if they need to see a doctor, and then there's protocol to follow, being able to return to play. And then, I made sure I had all the parents for soccer season now sign this with their child so they know that there at least is a procedure in place and what signs to look for. Because sometimes you don't always know that it happened on the field and later on at home, or the next day, the signs start to show. So, and this is becoming more and more common. It just came from a soccer game, actually, and a lot of kids are wearing those concussion bands now in a lot of the sports, so, but they're not required yet. They say within at least three years, the concussion bands will be required by all players. So, right now, they're not. So, I'm willing to help out any way I can if I need to be on a committee to help this become policy, to discuss it more with you. I'm happy to do that.
If everything that you want is in this procedure, then we can, I'd look for a motion to accept these procedures as printed for the Acton School Department and to pass it on to the policy committee to write it, to put it in policy format, to write it into a national school policy. Is that what you want?
Yeah.
The policy itself, we could just make the policy right here, and the policy can be to follow the Acton School concussion management procedure, see, parentheses, you know, whatever number that becomes in the book.
X, Y, Z.
Yeah.
J, F, K.
Well, basically, that's what we're doing, really.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's all that policy needs to say.
Right, well, well...
There's supposed to be a two reading, but this can be just part of the school committee, the meeting vote.
Right, that we accept.
That we accept that.
We accept the procedures. We won't have to go through the two readings. And there's probably, there's probably on the state website, there's probably also, if they're going to be, if they're going to be requiring it, there's probably also going to be a template on the state website where we get the policies that this could be fed right into.
Yeah, there's all kinds of different ones. Right, and Sanford took from other schools as well and fit their needs, and then I took Sanford's with Carol Wendell's help and molded it to our needs. And there's a lot of small schools, you know, St. James, for instance, is in a similar boat, you know, as us, they don't have a trainer, they don't even have a school nurse, so, but we all have to have this policy for the protection of our kids and ourselves.
And our selves.
Did you say you had already sent home this?
I did for soccer because I had to have something, and soccer was supposed to start today.
Right.
So, I had to have something in place. So, that's why I called a procedure, so, and it's not really official until it becomes a policy, but at least the parents, all the soccer parents have this for this season.
But this would be the procedure. The policy is going to be a little statement saying, you know, that we have a procedure.
Okay. So, this is what I can still hand out at the start of basketball season?
So, this is in place after tonight?
This will be in place that we've accepted the procedure. We can accept the procedure tonight, and then it will be in place, fine to pass out to parents, and then the procedure will be...
Part of the policy.
Made into part of the policy board.
And I can tell the league that Acton, at what point, is it tonight that it's official? I can tell the league that Acton has an official concussion policy?
Procedure.
Procedure.
We have, yeah, we don't have a policy. We have, that we have accepted this management procedure, and then it's being made into a policy by the policy committee.
Okay.
Okay.
And my next meeting's October 22nd, my next AD meeting, so...
It'll be in place by then, we'll have had the first reading by then.
And somebody will let me know?
We'll have the first reading in October.
Do the kids from Acton wear that, is it mandatory that we wear the concussion bands?
No, not yet. I mean, they're hoping within the next, I know.
How much do those cost?
They're anywhere from $30 to $80, depending on how high-tech you want to get with them. So, quite a few of the varsity kids, I mean, not even every varsity kid, I just left a varsity soccer game, and quite a few of them aren't even wearing them, but, I mean, there's a lot of contact that happens, especially in soccer. So, it's not mandatory right now, but...
And high schools have come out with a new football helmet, and a lot of them are making them mandatory.
Right.
They have a concussion strip.
Built right in.
Built right in. And a lot of the towns are taking them on as mandatory, you know? Very effective too, makes a huge difference.
I mean, soccer players are at risk. A lot of people say that, you know, soccer, it's a wimpy sport, but if you think about it, I mean, they have no padding, and there's just as much contact as football sometimes. I mean, it's a very physical game, so...
Yeah.
And we have 32 kids playing soccer this year, 16 on the boys team and 16 on the girls team, so I'm very excited.
And it is Paul Levaser?
Is it Paul or Pete?
Pete, Pete, sorry.
So, it is Pete.
Pete Levaser.
But he was the freshman coach, correct?
Yes.
Yes. So, my son had him.
Teachers at Willard School, correct?
Yes, he does.
Okay.
He's excellent. He's coached in Sanford for over 20 years, and I've been on the Sanford soccer board with him for over 10 years, so as soon as I found out that he didn't have his job, I said, "Hey, I got a deal for you." So, he went out and bought all his royal blue.
Oh.
Because he's been wearing red and white forever and he said he increased his royal blue wardrobe. So, he's very excited.
Very good. He's a nice man.
Yeah, very nice.
Okay, so have we actually voted on this?
I'll make a motion to accept the Acton School concussion management procedure as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the Acton School concussion management procedure as written. All those in favor? Now, let's have a motion to integrate this concussion management procedure into our policy.
So moved.
I was going to say, integrate. Right. And then we'll have to get a meeting, policy meeting together, I mean...
That's right. Well, I got a spear.
Okay, so Mary, Mary...
That might try this year.
Mary made the motion.
I made one.
And Jeanette seconded?
Mm-hmm.
And please let me know if there's anything you want me to change on here, because like I said, it's just done, you know, Sanford's, and then Carol Wendell and I went through it for Acton, but doesn't mean that someone else might see something that will...
The state, we take them words from the state sometimes to tweak it to what we need.
Yep.
Make this fit into the state format.
Right.
I would also encourage Tracy during budget time to start researching...
Concussion bands.
Bands, and give us at least that data that we can follow.
It's hard because you have to have the, you know, you measure the diameter of a child's head too, so it's...
But you'll know what the prices are.
Yes, yeah, I can definitely do.
I mean, as far as budgetary purposes, you have that information.
If this is something we're going to provide or ride at a...
Once we know the team, we can discount rate or something.
Where do you buy these bands?
Most few kids buy them online. They're not in a lot of stores right now. I've seen them at Dick's, but most of the kids are buying them online. Can't remember the name of the site right now.
So, they're pretty much buying them themselves, right?
Yeah. Like buying soccer.
Mouthpiece is mandatory, right?
Yep, mouthpiece is mandatory, yeah.
My point was concerned is the cost.
I wonder if maybe a notice could go home to the soccer parents with that website, so with that website, so if anybody wants to, so that they, so that the parents know about those bands.
That's right, you know what, I should have, that could be something that could be put right on here as well, suggested, I could put it right on this as well, but when it goes home. But in the meantime, I can send that home to the parents.
These headbands, they're going to be like a one-time buy, they're not going to be interchangeable for some other child, right? I mean, this is going to be a, you know, there's a new pro shop that opened down in Springvale, you know, where Springvale Hardware, next to the barber shop, used to be a restaurant two or three times, A Pro. They just opened down there, I don't know who it is, but.
Back in the flower shop there.
Right, right.
So it's, right now, if I can clarify this, right now, it's up to the individual families who are purchasing this for their athletes. And I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, but, you know, many times, we have students who have and then have not, so we should know what the cost is. It may be that it's something we want to discuss in the future for subsidizing, that we can make, you know, a contribution to help parents afford this. Because it is individual, like, like the mouth guard, it's not something you're going to pass on. It's not a shirt you're going to wash and pass on. But, you know, if we're talking about the safety of the kids, I would not want finances to prevent safety.
Especially the head.
Yeah.
I mean athletics.
And I'm assuming that the thirty-two come from both seventh and eighth grade, correct?
Yes, and some sixth graders.
So, I mean, if, if a kid bought one of these and went on to play, went on to play in high school, they would still already have their headband, correct? And some of the kids that would get them this year would already have them for next year, so.
Is it adjustable, so like an eighth grader now?
There are, there are some that are adjustable, and that's where you get into the upper price range. Yeah, and then there's some that have, you know, the super padding, and some that don't have as much padding, you know, like the three layers of padding.
I can't even picture what they look like.
It's going to be quite tricky, yeah.
Instead of having a helmet.
Yeah.
Well, again, if you could just do best to.
Yeah, I certainly can.
But they're going to probably make them wear helmets eventually, I don't know.
Bubble wrap.
Soccer players are very vulnerable, I know, I know.
Like lacrosse players, not much padding, but they have a nice little helmet, you know? Similar contact.
Of course, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah. Just something to protect your brain.
We voted on everything, right, Jim?
Yes, you did.
Okay. Let's see.
Thank you for all that work, I appreciate it.
Nurses request a Policy Committee about a status of bloodborne pathogen policy.
Okay, this is something that I received Sunday, so it wasn't in your packet. This is Carol Wendell's request for a policy on bloodborne pathogens. So I'm just, everyone have one?
Yeah.
Okay. Basically, I'm just recommending that when we have our policy meeting soon, that this is one of the other items that we'll prepare.
Policy Committee's going to require several day retreat, food brought in.
So is this something we need to vote on? We just.
This is news, basically.
Yeah.
Well, first of all, we have to come to some conclusion when we're going to have this policy meeting, you know, I mean.
I know, you see, we have been following, Andy's been using the bloodborne, right? That whole thing, the pathogen policy, or some type of education?
Well, there's different policies about hazardous waste and hazardous material. It's in here, but there's nothing specific about.
Bloodborne.
Bloodborne pathogen.
So ever since I've been here. Bloodborne, but you know, when you got the flu epidemic, or, you know, you're cleaning for the flu, I mean, it's very similar.
Well, that's. Well, you know, bloody nose or whatever, the thing is that we've been following a procedure for as long as I can remember, and then Carol Wendell, over the summer, you know, emailed and said, you know, can I have a copy of the actual policy?
Never had one.
And, you know, digging out, and we didn't have one, so, you know, she's been following state guidelines.
Right.
But we didn't actually have a policy.
We don't have one about that particular thing. It's hazardous waste, hazardous material, what you have done, washing your hands, sneezing and all that, but there's nothing to do with.
But, yeah, every, beginning of every school year, we have had a update or a presentation or something related to it. So she's been following guidelines that have evidently come from, out of the school, from the state level or something, and so, there's nothing in the school.
You must have to do that with your staff too, right, Andy?
Yeah, we do bloodborne pathogens, we also do chemical hygiene training.
Right.
The other thing too is.
You're following something, it's state level?
Main municipal now is also offering more and more online safety training classes.
Okay, so then, let's just make a motion, somebody make a motion that we pass this on to the Policy Committee, that a policy for bloodborne pathogens be adopted.
So moved.
Mary and Jeanette, all in favor? All right, ten, number ten.
Okay, I'm very pleased, I'm very pleased that Kimberly Oliver from Limerick has accepted our opportunity to become our accounting and personnel manager. She would start work on the twenty-third, very, very qualified, both in accounting and governmental municipality work. She was the, three years as an elected selectman in the town of Limerick, and actually went back and finished her accounting degree while doing that so that she could reorganize the Treasurers Office because of the fact that there hadn't been enough education in the Treasurers Office to manage the funds in the proper way based on their auditor's reports. So she comes to us from, more recently, from one of our vendors, Wobin, and highly recommended to join us. I think you will appreciate the breadth of her skills and her eagerness and sincerity. She's a good fit for this district.
Any questions?
Sounds good to me.
I did an analysis, and I will talk about it in executive session of page.
Do we have to make a motion on this hire?
Yeah, make a motion.
Because she's a contract personnel.
Yes, because she is a, yeah.
Administrator.
She'll have a contract.
She'll, she'll be, I don't know, what's the word I'm looking for?